Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting of November 28th, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will take place on December 19th. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. The first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the committee. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting, and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. Wanted to highlight a couple of publications that recently were mailed to all the residences in Shrewsbury. We first had our fall edition of the Shrewsbury School Journal, which, the front page, of course, has a beautiful rendering of our soon-to-be New Beal School that will be built at the Glavine Center. And again, thank the community for their wonderful support of that project. But an article about the New Beal by Mr. Palich, a variety of articles of interest, including some examples of the various tweets that our leadership team has been sending throughout the year. And thanks to our, the assistance of our terrific Director of IT, Brian LaRue, and my assistant Beth McCollum, there's now actually a Twitter feed right on our homepage. So if people look at our homepage for the Shrewsbury Public Schools, you can see that feed from our district Twitter account, and lots of great information and photos of things that are happening across all of our schools. In addition to that, we're very pleased that we were able to mail out a copy of the 2017 annual report. There is a variety of information about everything from financial information about the school district, enrollment, academic results. But my favorite part of the publication is that there are profiles of several, a couple of students who graduated last year, profiles of several staff from across the district, different educators, as well as profiles of alumni, some recent and some not-so-recent, who have gone on to do interesting things with their careers after they're graduating from Shrewsbury High School. So I encourage people to read it if you didn't happen to get a copy mailed. It is on our website under the About Us tab, and we'll be sure to keep publicizing that. I do want to thank Beth McCollum, who was instrumental in putting together both of these publications. Karen Isaacson, who's our Director of Extended Learning, was the coordinator for the annual report. And both, I think, really tell the community a lot about what we do as a school district and hopefully generate a lot of pride in the work that we do, the value that we bring to the community, and it's a great place to raise a family and have your children educated. So we're really appreciative that we're able to get those publications out, and that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is an update with regard to our science curriculum. The committee is going to hear a presentation from our elementary curriculum coordinators and students about the new science curriculum. The Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Amy Clotter, will lead us in the presentation and also introduce us to her guests.
Thanks so much. Would everybody come and join me at the table? I'm here today with the instructional coaches and curriculum coordinators from the elementary level, and some honored guests from the field. This is my favorite kind of presentation because you hear directly from people who are most important, our students and our teachers. Want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is John Papalato.
My name is Shabba Gajari.
I'm Blake Rice.
I'm Siddharth S. Ramakrishnan.
I'm Bryce. And I'm Colin.
So we have students from three different levels. We have our first graders, raise your hands if you're first graders, our second graders, and our fourth graders. But we're going to start off with some overview about the science practices, thanks to Mrs. Kendrick. So she's going to take this chair next to me. You guys make a little bit of stuff? Okay. You sit there. Yeah. We can pull up other chairs so that everyone has a space to sit. We can do that. It's great to have a crowd like this. It's a good problem to have. Sorry. So, we've been with this journey alongside the state, and you guys know this from your report in the packet, as they first proposed and then revised the science standards. And the purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you a firsthand look at what some of those shifts in education mean. And I think the first part is kind of like the new math standards. Remember our adoption of math in focus? We focused first on the math practices. And so, I'm going to hand it over to Erin Kendrick, who is the instructional coach and curriculum coordinator for Coolers School, to tell you a little bit about this.
Great. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, and I know I speak on behalf of my fellow instructional coach, curriculum coordinators at the elementary level. It's really a pleasure to be here addressing you tonight. If you wouldn't mind, perfect. So what are the science practices? Well, they are the behaviors that scientists engage in, and they are the behaviors that we want our student scientists engaging in, regardless of the particular content that they may be studying. And these behaviors include asking questions, developing models, and some of these awesome student scientists are going to be sharing their models shortly with you. But also things like constructing explanations, analyzing data, things like that. So before we let the students get to sharing, I'd like to ask you, the school committee, to play along. You are, you are going to play the role of some elementary student scientists studying a unit on ecology, and I am going to play the elementary teacher, guiding you through a science experience. And this experience is going to highlight three of the science practices, particularly developing and using models, constructing explanations, and obtaining, evaluating, and communicating information. We're going to need to pass out some materials to you, so...
And while we do that, everybody else can play along too.
Of course. There's paper if you want some.
I'm going to deputize Dr. McGee to speak on behalf of the committee. Yep. Expert being very low bar.
Good idea. Thanks. How are you? These ones be graded? She's very low stress.
Thank goodness.
No pressure.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
All right, so to do this activity, we are going to use a resource that many elementary teachers are currently using in their science classrooms. It's a resource called Mystery Science. And this is a website that provides engaging videos and hands-on investigations that teachers can use in their classrooms, and each one is focused around a central question or a mystery. Tonight's is where do fallen leaves go? Okay, all right, go ahead and play that first video.
Hi, it's Doug. You've probably noticed how in the fall season, or in autumn, there's always some trees that drop their leaves. And as you walk down the sidewalk, they make that nice crunching sound as you step on them. Something I've loved to do every year since I was a little kid is to rake up a big pile of those leaves and then just run and jump in. I do a big leaf jump. But you know, then winter would come, and then spring, and I wouldn't see those leaves on the ground anymore, just grass. I totally forget about the leaves that used to be on the ground. But where do they go? Now, I know what you might be thinking. The ones people rake up from their yards, those get put into bags and hauled off to the garbage dump. But forget about the leaves in the yard. I'm talking about the leaves anywhere. I mean, think about the leaves on the forest floor, the ground around the trees. The trees in the forest drop their leaves, and there's no one going around raking the forest floor. So shouldn't the forest floor be piling up so thick with leaves by now? I mean, year after year after year of dropping leaves, it should be like hundreds of feet of leaves. That'd be like the most fun leaf jump ever. Where do all those leaves go? Why doesn't the forest floor look like this? What do you think?
All right, so, after watching that video, I'm going to assign you a task. Your task is to draw a model that explains what you think happens to the leaves on the forest floor. Now, I included a little bit of a rubric there to show you that when we're asking students at the elementary levels to draw models, we're really hoping and working with them to get them to draw models that predict or explain the natural world and don't just describe it. So, go ahead. I don't want to rush you scientists, but, but, you know, take another minute or so. It doesn't have to be perfect, you know?
It's a lot more art than science.
All right, but so, if we zoom out in the classroom, we'd have students draw what they think happens, and then, if you can just scroll to the, the next part, one more. Perfect. And then, we'd have them stop and play this.
So where do all the leaves go when they fall off the trees? Why isn't the forest just piled super high with dead leaves? If you want to find out the answer, you have to actually go in a forest. And what you want to do then is look very closely at the forest floor. Here's a sped-up video showing a leaf after it's fallen to the forest floor. In everyday language, we would say this leaf is rotting. It's there, and over time, it breaks down. But when scientists looked more carefully at rotting leaves, they realized a leaf doesn't just somehow break down or rot all on its own. There's something that grows on it, something that's doing the breaking down. It's this stuff, white-colored strings or threads that start to grow on the fallen leaves. What are those things? Scientists have discovered that if you look closely at the soil on the forest floor, especially if you dig into it, you can almost always find these white threads growing all over the place. They even move around very slowly, as you can see in this sped-up video. They seem kind of alien, until you watch what they can do after it rains. Now, this is a patch of forest floor where there's lots of these white threads growing in the soil. And now, watch what happens if we show it in a sped-up video after it's been raining. Ready? Here we go. Oh, you see that thing? Here's a view of it from the side. Do you recognize these? Watch what happens. There are mushrooms popping up. So those little white threads we saw, they're the roots of mushrooms. Here's a diagram to help you visualize it. Mushroom roots are spread out within the soil all around the forest floor. Only after it's been raining do the mushroom roots send up the mushrooms themselves. But the mushroom roots are there in the soil the whole time, living a secret life. What scientists discovered about mushroom roots is that they poke out from the forest floor and surround dead plant leaves, touching them on all sides. As they do this, the mushroom roots let a liquid flow out, which starts breaking the leaf apart or decomposing it. Mushrooms are what we call decomposers, meaning they break dead things apart. Some of that leaf, they suck back in and digest. It's what they eat. But some of it they leave behind as a blackish-brown material. That's what soil is, or the less formal word for that is dirt, the stuff that plants grow in. This is hard to see, so let me show you what happens to a bunch of dead leaves in another sped-up video. Let's watch. Here, you can see the mushroom roots are growing, and at the end of two weeks, look, the leaves have turned into soil. So that's why we don't see leaves on the forest floor. Mushroom roots eat and digest part of the leaves, breaking them up and turning what's left into soil. And there's not just one kind of mushroom, there are all different kinds of mushrooms. They come in many different colors, they come in different...
Okay. Then back to the slides. So now, after watching that part, I might ask you to revise your model to more accurately explain what happens to the leaves. So go ahead and do that. While you're doing that, another part of modeling at the elementary level is having students evaluate the merits and limitations of a model, including their own, and this sometimes includes, you know, having them revise their models to make them more accurate and more scientific. And then the last piece of this, which I won't have you do for sake of time, but I would have students do, is now use your model and turn and talk to a partner and explain what happens to the leaves on the forest floor. And while you do that, reference your model, and that would get at that constructing explanations piece.
I'll test them on the way out today.
Sounds, sounds great. So as you can see, that was just a brief activity, but doing that, we highlighted three of those scientific practices, the modeling, the explaining, and the communicating information. And so now, I'm going to hand it off to my colleague Lisa Pupasian and a few student scientists to share some of their work with you.
Thanks, Erin.
Welcome.
So this is Bryce Pabigian and Colin Davis, and they're both students in Camille Viscomi's first-grade classroom here at Patton.
The Earth orbits around the sun. The sun stays put. The Earth doesn't stay put. It rotates and orbits. It takes 24 hours to rotate. The A, B, C, D shows how it rotates. A is when it starts to get sunny in the morning. B is the middle of the day. C is evening. D and G is night.
So Bryce and Colin have worked really hard to create models to explain what, what does your model explain?
The sun and the Earth, how it rotates and orbits.
And why we have...
Sun, night and day.
Why we have night and day, yes. Yep, Colin, you want, would you like to explain your model?
Yeah.
Do you want your folder or do you...
This is the Earth. One side has died and the other side has light. The sun is not moving. Earth rotates and orbits around the sun. When one side of the Earth is facing the sun, it has death. When it rotates, the other side that was night now becomes dead.
Wow. Wow. That's all I could say. Wow. Before you did this work with Mrs. Viscomi, did you think that the Earth moved or that the sun moved?
The Earth, the sun.
You thought that the sun was moving?
Yeah.
Guess what?
What?
I did two for a long time. So they've worked really hard to, to understand that and then to demonstrate their knowledge.
Excellent.
Nice work, Mrs. Viscomi.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, boys. I just want to see if it's second grader. Yep, second graders. Come on up. Come up and see. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is John Papalato.
And my name is Shabba Gajari. This was a model of how to save hills from landslides. Landslides can hurt people and cause a lot of damage. We made a model of the hill out of cornstarch and cinnamon. Our group tried a lot of, a lot of different things to keep the hill safe from the landslide. We used paper towels, toothpicks, and cotton balls and tinfoil to protect the hill. The tinfoil did not work well because it didn't suck up any water. The cotton balls and the paper towels worked well because they sucked up most of the water, and the hill stayed the same.
The paper towels and cotton balls acted like roots and absorbed the water. When we felt the cotton balls and paper towels, they were really wet, so we could tell they absorbed the water. I learned that landslides can cause a lot of damage to people and their houses. Testing models can help you learn more about how to stop that damage and keep people safe. Models can help scientists to learn more about the real world.
There's a whole video.
So we put paper towels, wait, so we covered our model with cotton balls all over, and then we covered the cotton balls with paper towel straps. And... Well, what do you have here? Because the paper towel absorbed the water.
It acted like roots and sucked up the water.
Okay. Anything to add here? So are you going to try a different model for the next test?
Yeah.
So you can get a sense of the flavor of the classroom as kids are doing some of this modeling. That's great. And whose class are you two in?
Frankans.
Way to go, Frankans. You represented your classroom as well. And all, all four of these students talked and I typed for them, so they, those are their words. You're doing great.
Hi, I'm Siddharth. And I'm Blake. The model is showing how deposition looks in the real world. The water was representing either a body of water or precipitation. When the water was carrying the sand downstream, it represented sediment moving. The large rocks that we added actually stopped the deposition, and that surprised me. And I learned that when the water creates pathways, first it has to break off the rocks, and this is the term we call erosion. Then it brings the rocks downstream, and wherever it stops, it drops the rocks that broke off. Deposition is the term for this action. It was helpful to have a model so you could see for yourself what it actually looked like in the real world. We didn't need to go down to a river and watch how the rocks break off and get carried away. We created a simulation to show it what it would be like and learn from it.
Thank you, guys, for sharing. We can watch a really short clip of your model as well. One cool thing about the Spandenberg class is they had different models of different sizes, so some kids used the large stream label, and some kids, kids used smaller, like, trays, and they were able to see which one would be more effective for their models as well. So that was great. Thanks for sharing, friends. Nice work. So I'd like to invite all of our instructional coaches and curriculum coordinators from the elementary level forward, because I want to recognize the leadership that they've demonstrated. Come on, you guys. In thinking through some of the logistics about what the lessons are, what are the resources that people need in order to feel confident teaching new content, and also, as you'll see, you know, later in the budget presentation, next year, we're going, going big with everyone, and you'll see some unusual materials that we haven't grappled before. And they've played an important role in thinking about how do we provision for those things and how do we support teachers as they deal with a bunch of sand. So our next steps are really to think about PD's schedule to anticipate the rollout for next year, thinking about programming at the Summer Institute so that teachers who are interested in diving in and getting some support have some opportunities to do that, and beginning in September, rolling out two grade levels, K to 4, the elementary level. So, thank you very much, all of you guys, and I want to make sure we also acknowledge all of the pilot teachers who have played an instrumental role in helping move the work forward. Thanks. Can I get a round of applause for these guys? Now, for our student presenters, we have a nice certificate, so if you follow me, I want you to take hands with the school committee and have a resident number.
Any questions after that, if you want to?
And then the second graders? There we go. There we are. There you go. Nice job. You did a great job.
Good job.
You did a great job.
Good job.
You did a great job. Good job. You did a great job. I like that. Great job you did. Nice job you did.
Colin, that's for you.
Job you did.
And I've got Bryce. There we go. Nice job, Bryce. Way to go. And I've got Sean. This is yours. Nice job. Congratulations. Collette, and you, Shrada. Awesome. Congratulations. Nice work. All right, Siddharth. Congratulations. Well done. And Blake, excellent work. Nice job. Excellent. Well, thank you for a wonderful presentation. I'm sure Ms. Clotter will stick around and will turn it over to the committee to see if you have any questions or comments.
The representatives from all of our elementary buildings that came out tonight as well.
Mrs. Mrs. Kinzano.
This is fabulous. Thank you all so much, and especially the students for presenting. I was struck by two things. One is the use of language that they use, the scientific language, all the way from the first graders, second and fourth graders, really specific language, so that must be incorporated into the curriculum as well. And then, the second piece I noticed was this idea of growth mindset we saw on the videos of like practicing, and, and sometimes it's not always going to work. And, and I think... And, and I think that seems to go across the board for our strategic priorities, like that, that's an important piece that goes beyond science.
Yes.
Um, so those are the two things that really stuck out and um, makes me really excited about what this will be doing for the entire district.
Yeah, I'm glad you noticed that, because I think some of our strategic priorities overlap, and that's a perfect example of that. I think this was an exercise in growth mindset from both an adult perspective and also in terms of a student perspective, and I think it's really exciting to see that progression.
Mrs. Fritz.
I think what Erin said, it's that problem solving and using critical thinking at such an early age. You have issue, how are you going to figure it out with real hands-on application? I think you learn, personally I do, you know, with hands-on and figuring it out yourself, which you can apply to a lot of other subjects. So it's, I love having the kids come and present, cuz it makes it real, you know, we really see how it works in the classroom, so thank you so much.
You're welcome, it's my pleasure. My favorite kind of presentation.
Yes.
Mr. Wensky.
Yeah, in addition to what my colleague said, what I'm most struck by was the confidence of all these students to come up here and present to us. Sure, a lot of nerves and a lot of preparation went into today and, and it's very much appreciated. I, I think what stands out to me is just the, the interactive learning and how they apply that learning to the videos that they're watching and then the drawings, which honestly, my drawings got worse by the level. Yeah, she could see that, too. But uh, yeah, no, it was great, so thank you to the students for the pres- presentations, uh, to the educators for everything that you're doing with these students, and to the families for coming out today. Uh, we're not used to having such a, a big crowd here. We appreciate uh, your involvement and your participation tonight, and, and we won't be offended when, when you have to leave, so.
They have to get to bed, those students.
Dr. McGee.
This is a, a great presentation, I agree with everything that was said, but uh, one question I have is what did you learn during the pilot? Is, is the rollout gonna be any different as a result of this?
That's a good question. I think some of the ways that content was tackled is, is a little bit different. Any of the coaches wanna speak to some significant changes or even the teachers for that matter? A lot of logistics around provisioning. Um, and what's the best way to think about getting at the learning? Well, providing some hands-on activities, but um, not having it be about the materials. I think that was an overarching theme.
If you could actually just come up to the microphone, just so folks at home can have a chance to. Oh, Mrs. Spadenberg.
Yeah, the fourth grade model that you saw this year, we had, this is the second year of the pilot. Um, last year it was a teacher demo. Um, was kinda the going in, and we just thought it just didn't, kids didn't get as much out of it because they didn't get to build it themselves, to build the, to see the deposition. And it was neat if you, you had seen across all the different models in my classroom, like lots of different setups for it. And then it was quiet cuz we all watched each other, so we got to learn from each others. Um, but I think you guys really benefited from like being able to do it hands-on and like design your own. So.
So that was, if we hadn't been piloting it, I don't know, we would've, wouldn't have had that experience.
Terrific, thank you.
That's great.
Colleagues, anything further? I just wanna say thank you to all of the students and families who participated tonight. We had an impressive group of young people up here presenting, and thank you to our educators as well for your focus and determination with this process. I think it's impressive that Shrewsbury students at such a young age are engaging with the scientific method and investigating questions through this process. I think if you looked at the range of drawings up here, you might lose faith in the capacity uh, of people to do this kind of work. But then all you have to do is look at Shrewsbury Public Schools students to be inspired all over again. Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanna add?
Uh, thank you, uh, thanks so much to, for coming out this evening. Appreciate all the administrators and teachers and instructional coaches, curriculum coordinators, especially the parents and our students, of course. Uh, when we talk about what our, our strategic priorities are, and there, there's a very significant effort to make sure that our students are learning, you know, what we call the four Cs of 21st century learning, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity. And you can see all of those things embedded in these different uh, lessons and, and projects. And at young, at a young age, and we wanna see this continuing all the way through, uh, as a through line, uh, I'm excited about uh, this new curriculum. I know it has been really hard work and I appreciate that on the part of the pilot teachers and, and everyone who's put this together. Uh, but I, I think it's, it is so well worth it because uh, we are at a, a point where having uh, you know, scientific thinking is more important than ever. Um, and having an educated citizenry who understand science, understand the scientific method and proceed processes, um, that's important to society. And, and uh, I'm very confident that uh, the young people we just saw present this evening are well on their way. And it would not surprise me if someday, uh, perhaps one of them is in this annual report, 2000 something, I'm not sure what year, uh, perhaps as an engineer or a scientist making some great discovery. Uh, and uh, I hope to read about you someday when I'm in my happy retirement and read about what all the wonderful things um, that our students who were in first and second and fourth grade, um, did. But uh, the, the cool thing is you're scientists right now, doing this work is real science, and it's really exciting that we're doing that in our schools. So thank you to everyone and uh, really appreciate you coming out and presenting this evening, it's the highlight of my day.
And as Mr. Wensky alluded to, for those families who were part of that previous presentation, we won't mind if you need to duck out uh, as we move on to other matters in our agenda. Uh, the next item on our agenda is another time-scheduled appointment is an update with regard to our Portrait of a Graduate Initiative. Uh, Portrait of a Graduate was formally adopted by the school committee in December of 2017. Since that time, this district has utilized uh, the document in various ways to uh, guide the work of the district towards our collective vision for our students' education. EdLeader 21 is an organization that promotes 21st century learning skills and was the originator of the Portrait of a Graduate approach. Uh, we had some staff from the district participate this past fall in an EdLeader 21 conference. Uh, we're gonna hear from some of those staff members about their experiences, uh, and update on the process. And if Ms. Clodder would once again introduce us to her guests.
Absolutely. So I'm here with the middle school curriculum coordinators and assistant principal Heather Gablasky and instructional technology and media director, Shawna Powers. Maybe we should start by just going down the line so you know who is who.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Heather Gablasky, uh, assistant principal at Sherwood Middle School.
Hi, I'm Lisa Daly, the ELA curriculum coordinator at the middle schools.
Rob Dunn, curriculum coordinator for social studies for the middle schools.
Melissa McCann, math curriculum coordinator for middle school. And I'd also like to acknowledge that our colleague in the science department, Pam Poitras, has been involved in this work, although couldn't be here tonight.
Hi, I'm Shawna Powers, director of instructional technology and media services.
So you just saw what the student side looks like, and I think um, one of the things that's really important as we look at the shift in education is what the adult learning side looks like. And so this evening's presentation will help, I hope, make that connection clear. So as you've seen, we've been thinking about how the portrait of the graduate informs our thinking around uh, where the curriculum is shifting. Um, and you know, sometimes it can feel a little bit like alphabet soup, like there's PBL and there's the four Cs. But essentially, there's a lot of commonality around those elements. We're looking for student agency, we're looking for authenticity and genuine tasks that resemble kinda what people in the workforce are going to do, and um, audience. So being able to, as you saw with our students tonight, articulate thinking, present thinking, hear, reflect it here and reflect on feedback, and then revise work. Um, so those are some constants that are connecting those two ideas. Um, and EdLeader is a group that helps think through how to make that shift. I'm gonna turn it over to Heather to talk a little bit about what that looks like.
So teachers today are no longer the holder of all knowledge in the classroom. With increased access to information, students need to develop skills that go beyond the acquisition of knowledge. They need to analyze and synthesize and apply knowledge to new situations. Students today need to be more in the driver's seat of their own education. When students determine what interests them about the content and ask questions in order to direct their learning, they're not only more engaged in their, in the learning process, but they develop skills that are transferable to other areas of their life, whether it be as a continuing learner, in a job, or as a contributing member of our democratic society. At the middle level, teachers are developing learning experiences that require students to create their own questions, answer those questions, and present what they have learned to others. Students in grade six, for example, are examining history through a thematic lens rather than a chronological one, which allows them to make connections between the past and the present. Students, when they're learning about the, the development of agriculture or ratio and proportion, are engaged in work that requires them to apply their knowledge to real-world problems and situations. And students are also using their learning to better understand themselves as people and as learners. In a time when facts are easily accessible, students need to know how to find information that is relevant to their purpose, to assess that information for accuracy and bias, and use that information to solve problems or deepen their own understanding of concepts.
So um, the curriculum coordinators at the middle level submitted and were invited to present at the EdLeader 21 conference on uh, the tuning protocol. And the tuning protocol is a tool that helps to support the shift in educational practice at the middle level. Um, tuning protocols were created in 1992 by the National School Reform Faculty in the nineties, so they're not new and might be familiar to, to some educators and administrators. Um, we had, some of us had participated in a tuning protocol over time, over the years. But if um, at the summer institute, we had High Tech High come to us and present on uh, project-based learning. And we were introduced to the tuning protocols within that context, and that's where it kind of gained new life at the middle level. Um, a tuning protocol is a structured uh, process where a teacher presents a problem of practice or a dilemma to a group of colleagues. Um, and the, together, the group works to uh, through the protocol to provide feedback and ultimately help that teacher solve their dilemma or problem of practice. And in the context of creating project-based learning and innovative, innovative experiences, um, the teacher would be kind of presenting a project and asking their colleagues or peers for feedback on how to, to make the work better, to make the project better. Um, some of us, um, uh, once we use the, the tuning protocol, what we quickly realized is that the protocol is use, is useful not only in helping to make the project better, um, but it also becomes a really powerful learning experience for everyone who's participating in the protocol. So uh, it says that it's a structured process, but I think the most in, the most powerful part of the tuning protocol is that it contributes to the learning of the whole group in, involved in the protocol. So in the context of the 21st century learning and, and project-based learning, as we're making this shift from the teacher as the holder of the knowledge to um, helping our students to be more innovative, uh, to be critical thinkers, to, to be creative, um, it's, it's a tool really that is a capacity builder. Um, and it's why we thought it might be valuable in the context of an EdLeader 21 uh, conference and it, and at the community. The presentation was well, well-attended and, and well-received, and I think there was a lot of big pi, picture thinking there, which was, which Shawna will talk more about, but um, I think the tuning protocol really speaks to the how. How do we get whole school communities and how to move towards this? And how do we kind of shift culture and build the capacity so teachers feel supported in this change? Um, and we found the tuning protob, protocol to be a really powerful tool um, in, in moving uh, the, the educational landscape in a, in a school community in that direction.
It's become very popular with the teachers. And uh, here's an example of uh, one of the uh, project-based learning, it's student-centered. Teachers had to bring together a whole bunch of different components. They did a great job with it, but like all things, they, you know, they see improvement themselves and they're kinda dry on ideas. So um, here it's museum 1377, it was a project done at Oak, and the kids recreated a, uh, in a group. They recreated a museum site you'd, you'd see if you walked into any museum. And it had all sorts of components with it. The questions that uh, on the next slide, the questions that they had, they wanted to increase the students' uh, critical thinking. They thought the critical thinking could be pushed, which all teachers think, you know, I can do better, I can do better. Um, but they did think the artifact was really weak. A lot of time was spent on the artifact and they didn't really get any bang for their buck. So they put it before the teachers, like what could we do? And um, new set of fresh eyes saw it. And they came up with some great ideas, among them like taking the artifact and making it, uh, taking it a, a modern-day equivalent of say, uh, you know, a sword or um, any type of medieval instrument or, you know, uh, what would a mill be today? And making a modern equivalent. You could make an electronic instead of making a physical, you could make an electronic item, uh, artifact and use that. And so there were a bunch of different ideas, and um, so teachers got the feedback, loved the feedback, and have made alternations to their uh, project in the rollout in the spring. And it, just the energy around the table um, was great, and the teachers just couldn't wait to try it again. Um, so tuning protocols, very successful, very great, it is a wonderful tool when we're pulling the teachers out of their comfort zone.
In a more recent example, uh, the, the Oak Math teachers participated in a tuning protocol focused around differentiated instruction in the heterogeneous classroom. And while two teachers presented problems of practice and got plenty of feedback from their colleagues, I was really uh, excited when one teacher commented to me as he walked out of the meeting, totally unsolicited, um, that he thought he got as much out of the process as the person who presented the problem in the first place. And so back to what Lisa had mentioned, that's exactly uh, why we hope to continue this practice in our, in our schools. The, these examples indicate that the um, shifts in our teaching practices are then going to lead to shifts in learning experiences for students.
So attending the conference was an amazing opportunity that enabled us to connect with educators from all across um, the country, representing 32 states, um, 190 districts. And we were able to also um, hear inspiring keynote addresses and participate in workshops from um, educators and thought leaders, including Ted Dintersmith, Jay McTye, and Kathy Hirsch-Pasek. These leaders challenged us to continue to think about how schools can best prepare students for the world as it will be when they enter the workforce. According to the World Economic Forum, you've probably heard this statistic before, but um, 65% of students entering schools today are gonna be doing jobs that don't currently exist. So in his book, um, What Schools Could Be, um, Ted Dintersmith discusses the impact of the accelerating, um, the accelerating impact of innovation and machine intelligence on our society and on our economy. Um, so he talks about the increasing role that robots are, are playing and will continue to play in our lives, and goes into detail, you know, regarding, you know, your breakfast will be custom-designed by your kitchen robot and you know, you'll, you'll be taken to, to your meeting in your driverless car and so on and so forth. You know, your, your yard will be manicured by sp, specific robots who take care of that kind of job. You know, your trash will be picked up and so on and so forth. So a lot of the jobs that people currently hold will be taken over by machines. And so it really leads us to think really hard about how we need to be educating our students. And so um, you know, really continuing to focus on the four Cs and on providing our kids with these authentic learning experiences where, you know, they're, they're engaging in flexible thinking, um, they're being creative, they're communicating, collaborating with one another. Those are the skills that we know that they're going to need regardless of what the specific details of our futures will be. Um, and so the example of the project that my colleague shared is a really good example of the types of projects that we're encouraging teachers to pursue and provide for the students.
So just to sum it up, I, we have a lot of pockets of innovation at various levels at the district. We're grappling with kind of what does the model of making this shift look like? And does it have to be the same across levels or what are the through-line components? Um, and I think one of the things uh, we've learned kind of from the PD perspective is that initially the thought was we had to distinguish between projects and project-based learning, and we had to emphasize all of the elements that made project-based learning what it is, four Cs instruction. And really for teachers, that felt like a really heavy lift, because now I had to shift my practice, but I had to also incorporate all these elements simultaneously. And what we've seen is more successful is people starting from a one place. Um, I'm going to keep the same project, but I'm going to find an authentic audience. Um, and just that one shift, I'm going to build in more reflection, is the starting place to look at another revision. Um, and so finding protocols that help teachers to do that reflection together, you know, we know teaching is, can be an isolating profession. Um, and then giving them permission to kind of revise things over time, just as we're asking students to do that, has been an important component of the growth we've seen. Um, some of the next steps, look at tapping into some of the networks where we have, you know, it's, it's hard, you can envision what you might like to see, but it's hard to picture the how sometimes if we're stuck in our own constraints. And so um, the high school will be taking a trip with me to Catskill Bay High School, which is the companion high school to King Middle. If, for those of you that were part of the Portrait of the Graduate, know kind of what that model looks like. Um, to see, you know, what is a high school structure that facilitates this kind of learning look like? Um, and you know, we continue to see students um, exhibit their work at the middle level. And then here you can see, um, Shawna's been very successful in working with the media, uh, paraprofessionals to incorporate some STEM education in media. Uh, so the session that you used to think of as kind of going to the library looks a little different. It's, it's got a new um... It's, it's got a new, um, new perspective. And if you stop by the media centers, you'll see some of that, uh, some of those shifts in practice. So we're excited about where we are. We certainly came here as a result of some of the networks that we've been able to tap into through EdLeader. But when you see that, you know, we're presenting, not only do we learn from being in that environment, but we also develop a reputation for being on that front line and that's also sort of discipline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Gonzano.
Question, uh, uh, related to the tuning protocol. Like, how do you fit it into the structure of the workday? And, uh, and have you run into problems with that as we kind of think of ways to move this forward?
That's a good, that's a good question. And time, um, you know, everyone, and, and teachers are always looking for more time, in particular for professional development. Um, and, and as Amy had said, that, um, it's time to be together and to collaborate. You know, we're fortunate at the middle level to have a, a good amount of collaborative time. And, and we really try and eke every single kind of morsel out of every second of those. So I think the tuning protocol can last as long as an hour and can be shortened up to twenty-five minutes. So I've done two protocols in a department meeting. You could also do a protocol easily in a pod meeting or a small curriculum meeting. Pathway time has actually been very valuable because, uh, people who are participating in the Making Projects Real pathway have lots of time where, and we've kind of used that, those, that, that kind of, um, flexible time to gather lots of people, um, across departments. Because that's the other thing about tuning protocols. It's most powerful when you have lots of different kinds of teachers sitting around the table. Um, and so the pathway time has been a great time to, to pull everybody together. Cause people kind of have that common, that common piece.
Oh, absolutely.
A lot of the projects are interdisciplinary as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fritz.
It's great to hear this update because Erin and Dale, you were both involved from the beginning. And to see, you know, really how it's progressed and how positive it's been. And for the student learning piece, when we're talking about projects and making them meaningful. And it's not just a project for the project, like what does it mean? And what, you know, you're not making this diagram, whatever it is. You're actually understanding the information behind the why. I think that's great because we look at this Portrait of a Graduate. What's that end product when these students leave? Maybe we don't know what these occupations are going to be, but we're going to give them all the tools that we can possibly give them to be successful. So I think this is a great undertaking and it's really, you know, now we're seeing the fruits of that really come to fruition. So thank you so much.
Especially around skill sets and passion. Like those are the two things that I see develop. Skills is going to be used, doesn't matter what grade. And the, and just the passion because they get some choice and they get some, they see the result of something and they get to do instead of watch.
Right, right.
Go ahead.
And I think from, um, from an educator's perspective, what I'm hearing is if you're being given the opportunity to meet those guidelines that you have to, but also to kind of take it to the next step or the, the way you see fit in your classrooms to make sure students are getting this information and able to really use it and incorporate it in whatever the topic is or day-to-day. Do you feel that you, it's a little enlightening and better for you as educators that you're able to do this?
I would say that, um, the teachers who have really kind of embraced this have really been very energized by the idea of teacher as designer and, and teacher kind of as, um, there's autonomy, but it's kind of not like the Wild West. They're, they're still working within the basics of the, the foundations of the curriculum and of our standards-based learning, um, but have really kind of switched their lens and how they want to engage kids and what they want to do with kids. And it's really allowed them a lot of permission.
Excellent.
To go to places I think that they found to be very rewarding.
Good.
And to be real teachers, you know, if you think of a workplace, you don't have one person sitting up there, da, 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 da. You have the groups working and then the other person walks around, advises and things. And you find them being able to teach more. The, the reason they got into teaching, once they let up the reins, but it's uncomfortable to let go of those reins.
Right, right.
So that's, that, the tuning protocols allows them a little more comfort.
Excellent. Thank you.
Dr. McGee.
So I think this results in a better education and students will graduate and are better prepared to deal with the world. But I wonder if there is a, a price to pay at this stage of, of the process in the sense that if there's only so many hours in a day, if you had them lined up in rows and had them memorizing facts, uh, they would emerge with more facts, more answers than they would if you taught them how to solve problems, which is kind of what we're doing.
I think you're surfacing something that's a common dilemma for teachers when they're grappling with this. I want to do that, but I have to cover X amount of things. And Rob, I'm going to defer to you because I think you have the story to cover.
With, um, retention.
Alright.
Alright, so, so if they're passionate about it, the retention's going to be more. So I, I was, teacher wanted to try a project. He said, I just can't, you know, I can't, I have this, I have to do the countries of Africa. We've got to memorize them, da, 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 da. And I'm like, why? And, and he's like, well, they should know this and that. And they go, okay, come on. We went down the hall, went into an eighth grade, she was a seventh grade teacher, went into an eighth grade class and said, uh, who, who had so-and-so last year? Who witnessed so-and-so last year? And kids raised their hands and they said, who can name all the countries of Africa? One kid, who was, who was, of course, Mr. Geography Whiz and had the passion in it to begin with anyways and probably knew the countries before it was even taught. Not one kid in there knew them all. And, uh, maybe a handful knew more than ten.
Right. I, so I'm gonna, I'm agreeing with you. And I think one of the things I learned in that, uh, Innovations and Learning project was the retention pieces is one of the reasons that we don't need to jam so many facts into people's heads because three months later, most of them are gone. But with regard to, you know, comparisons of, uh, our education versus other countries or other districts or anything else, are they evolving in the same direction as we are now? Or are we, uh, basically being compared with people who are giving a different kind of education? And, you know, remembering, remembering the fact long enough to take the test?
Well, we have to remember that Massachusetts could be compared kind of on the PISA test with countries, right? We're doing relatively well and we're a strong district and a relatively strong state, um, very strong state. So I think we're doing okay. I think if you go to EdLeader, you quickly see that some districts are farther ahead in terms of assessing kids' competencies in some of these domains and thinking about assessment in a different way. So performance-based assessment, for example. Um, and really thinking about how you look at student competencies evolving over time. So one of our questions that we've been grappling with is, you know, what is the expectation? If, if students are able to do this level of collaboration at the middle level, what does that look like when they progress to the high school? What can we tell the high school kids will be able to do in terms of negotiation or presentation skills? Those kinds of things? What would it look like at elementary to prepare kids to do some of this work at the middle level? And we're at the beginning stages of having those conversations. So part of the purpose of connecting with networks like, um, the Portland Public Schools or, uh, EdLeader is to really think about where have people gone before? And how can we learn some of those, borrow some of those structures to do some of that work? And what's our model going to look like? Because, you know, each school district, it has its own constraints and challenges. And we have to think about what's going to work well in Shrewsbury because the biggest enemy of our progress is our success. Nobody's, you know, if we had a, a failing school system, it wouldn't be hard to contemplate a shift. It's really hard to move from success to something different. And we don't want to throw out the wrong thing.
Right, that's right.
And teachers are obviously reluctant to do that too. So we've been going slowly and supporting people who are making the shift and allowing it to be a slow progression. And I think it's now time to kind of think about what does our ideal model look like?
Dr. Sawyer.
Yeah, just to, to that, uh, I just was able to call up an article I saw a bit of time ago in the past fall from The Economist about Singapore, uh, which is at the very, very top of the PISA results, the most recent one. And has a longstanding reputation for outstanding exam results and that sort of thing. And the author of the article describes what, a, a quiet revolution where they are pushing really hard to move towards a more creative approach to education. Because they've made a determination that the skillset that their students need are not scoring high on exams, but being able to do all these other things and, and these four Cs and being more creative and, and critical thinkers. And so this is not unique to Shrewsbury, it's not unique to Massachusetts. I think if you do look and, uh, follow some of the, uh, people, including Ted Dintersmith, who you referenced was at the conference, or Ken Kay in EdLeader twenty-one and, and about a hundred and ninety districts you said were at the, at the conference. There, there is a growing movement across the country around making sure that what we are providing to students are things that are going to stick and things that are going to set them up, uh, for success and, and beyond, uh, being able to, to score well on a test. And so, you know, that, that's the piece that, um, I think Ms. Clutter articulated it very well, but it, it's not unique to here. And, uh, in Singapore, you know, we're on quote, the leading country in the world educationally, is also making that shift.
Colleagues, Mr. Wodskie.
Just one comment, I just appreciate the forward thinking here. I think it's important to continue to evolve the curriculum as technology evolves. Certainly over the last five years since we've seen the inception of the iPad program, we've seen just the level of engagement within students, uh, you know, increase. And it's like Heather said, I mean, the, you know, teachers are no longer the possessors of all knowledge, right? It's, it's how quickly you can Google search it. It's what you do with that knowledge and how you apply it. And we saw it, we saw it here tonight just from the students, so definitely appreciate the, the, the forward thinking here. Thank you.
Colleagues, anything further?
Just like to close out by saying thank you. I enjoyed this presentation and I'm glad that we as the committee and folks from the community who have a chance to watch this meeting had a chance to absorb this presentation. I think we and members of the community oftentimes get exposed to the students' learning process. But as you alluded to earlier, I think we very rarely get an insight into some of the processes that are part of your professional growth and development. Uh, and I'm extremely impressed by what I've heard tonight and I know that the community will be as well. So thank you for that. And Dr. Sawyer, anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, please. First off, I want to commend the team. These are, are very demanding jobs that each of these professionals has. Ms. Goblasky being an assistant principal in a school of almost a thousand fifth and sixth graders. We have four middle-level curriculum coordinators, each of whom are responsible for leading thirty subject matter teachers across both Sherwood and Oak. So responsible for essentially two thousand, uh, early adolescents. That's a scary phrase, two thousand. So, and then Shawna Powers, uh, you know, who is, is our director of instructional technology and media services, responsible across all nine of our schools essentially in helping kids gain media and literacy skills as well as technology skills, as well as the TV studio. She has a very wide portfolio of, of things she's responsible for, all of them doing outstanding job. Uh, and I'm proud that they were at this national conference presenting and presenting so well. Um, and I think that we have to continue to find ways, uh, for, uh, our school district to be a leader because I think the things happening here are innovative, the things happening here are at the highest level of professionalism. And it's important for us to share those with other places and also network with other places that are doing excellent work so we can learn, uh, from them. And that's something that, that I encourage to continue to happen. You know, Ms. Clutter has really moved that forward in a variety of ways since she's come on board into, into her role. Just literally about a half hour before this meeting began, I received an email from a researcher who said, uh, I'm contacting you because, uh, we saw you, uh, on the website for A Portrait of a Graduate and we're doing research about the kinds of curriculum, that shifts that are happening in districts. And would you be interested in, in potentially participating? Of course, I immediately forwarded that email to Ms. Clutter and I delegated that to her in terms of if she's interested in doing a potential interview with this researcher. But people are finding us, it's happening more and more often now frankly. The work that the Innovation Study Group did and then followed by the work that was done to develop with the, uh, the committee that, that created The Portrait of a Graduate. That's something that can't just sit as, oh, we did that a few years ago, what was that about? We have to continue to make that and hence tonight's, uh, you know, the title of the, the presentation. You know, how are we forwarding, advancing this vision? Because this is ultimately one for our students. And we can very easily, um, get stuck in the weeds of year-to-year goals and even, you know, month-to-month and day-to-day, um, and lose sight of that bigger picture. And leaders like this are helping us make sure that we're providing what, what the right things for our students and building the capacity of our teachers to be able to deliver that. So it's very exciting for me that this is happening. I, I, I am a little nervous about the artificial intelligence because someone's developing a superintendent robot. So many jobs have become obsolete and who knows how quickly. So we all have to be.
You might be that retired home earlier.
Based on the diagrams I was drawing, it's, it's, uh, you're only clearly artificial intelligence. You can do that better than I can now. But thank you so much for all the work that you do. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for representing the district so well and we really appreciate it.
We appreciate your time and support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sawyer, you asked us to reflect on, you know, what we're grateful for between now and the winter break and to acknowledge that. And I want to make sure that people understand the power of this thing, for me, in conjunction with the elementary instructional coordinators that you sought this evening and also the department chairs at the high school. These are the people that helped kind of fuel the vision. And it wouldn't work without their energy. So I'm really grateful for you guys too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you to each and every one of you. And Dr. Sawyer, luckily for you, I doubt we could afford the superintendent robot. Next item is under policy. It is a report on the Comprehensive School Health Grant Program. We're going to hear from Ms. Belcito and Ms. Freeman. By way of background, the district has an opportunity to apply for a comprehensive school health grant through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. This is a competitive grant which the district intends to focus on improving student mental and behavioral health outcomes. The grant could be for as much as one hundred thousand dollars per year for a ten-year period. Ms. Belcito and Ms. Freeman, welcome.
Thank you. So as you just said, the, it's, the title of the grant is Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. There has been a grant in place for the past, uh, at least ten, I think it's actually twenty years that it's been called the Essential School Health Services Grant through DPH. Our district has, uh, participated in that grant to a small extent. We have a three thousand dollar, uh, grant that we get annually and is, for the past several years, been used mostly for professional development for nurses. It's been, um, very nurse-focused. This grant, um, as the name kind of, um, would lead you to believe is looking at not just nursing services, but kind of other services involved in the school health realm. So we were asked to identify a priority population in applying for the grant. And, um, it will probably not surprise you to know that, um, we have identified students with mental and behavioral health concerns as our priority population. And Meg is going to talk a little bit more about the direction we want to go with that.
Thank you. So, a- as you know, from the data that we've seen, yeah, through the youth surveys that have been completed or, um, the data that we have through the health office and various other experiences and discussions we've had over the last couple of years, um, this priority population is certainly something in the forefront of all of our minds. Therefore, the main focus of this grant will be to propose to put in place a Bridge for Resilient Youth and Transition Program at our middle school. So our focus will be at Sherwood Middle School. And what we're looking to do is to serve the students that are having difficulty transitioning from all the elementaries into the middle school and/or experiencing, experiencing mental and behavioral health challenges that might be impeding their success at school or attendance at school. What we're looking to do, um, through the support of this grant is to have, um, two full-time professionals in the, um, program. One would be a clinician. And right now, when we talk about a clinician, um, in our preliminary conversations with Patty Waterhouse, the director of the middle schools, along with, um, Dr. Lozot, we're thinking about a, an adjustment counselor or a licensed mental health counselor. Along with that, we would need an academic support professional. And we've been talking, you know, obviously, um, what we'd look for as a teacher, um, first and foremost and, and what that would look like. But right now, we know an academic professional, um, would also need to support the program. And, you know, I think the four main things that people should be aware of in a program like this, this is very similar to the program at our high school, um, which we are now in year two and it's been very, very successful, but it will look slightly different at the middle school. We, we look to, um, have the consultants come back in, have some conversations with us that we, like we did at the high school, um, through the Bright Consortium with the Bridge out of Brookline. And what we would do is take a look at what it would look like at the middle level. So at the high school, when you think about academics, you're thinking about credits and credit recovery. It will look a little different, for example, at the middle school because we don't have, um, that need. But obviously, there could be academic need for students. There are four main components. So it would be the clinical support, um, for students, family engagement, um, care coordination, so for our staff and also the community providers that are helping the students and the families and the academics.
So one stipulation of the grant that we just want to be upfront about is that, um, over the, if we were to get grant funding over the first three years of the grant, the director of nursing position, um, needs to become a full-time position that includes no direct student care. So my position as it stands right now is, um, pretty much a half-and-half administrative and fifty percent direct student care. The way that that happens right now is very flexible. So I do a lot of covering for nurses and I am not kind of stationed in any particular building. So this shifting to a hundred percent administrative would obviously be somewhat of a change, but it would not require any backfilling of position or hiring of more nursing staff if that were to happen. if that were to happen. And as far as the amount of the grant goes, as you mentioned, the amount for Shrewsbury, the grant amounts are based on school enrollment. And we fall in the $100,000 per year, each year for up to 10 years for that, for student enrollment. And then there is a proportion of the grant that is based on the number of students or the percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged. We fall in Shrewsbury at 10%, and that is the cutoff for actually not getting any additional grant funds for that particular population. So our maximum grant amount would be $100,000 a year. So we're looking at using those grants to potentially fund some of the personnel. And then there'd be additional funding for things like professional development for staff, and the consultants that we would need to bring in for some programming and things like that.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Fritz?
Thank you for pursuing this. I think, you know, any amount of money to go toward this type of issue is very helpful. And you touched upon it when I looked at it, that, you know, I was looking at the benefits and the strengths versus those costs that could be incurred because of that. But you answered the question that there would not be the need to backfill a position or add a position. So I think that's helpful. But can you tell me, in here, we will be an active participant in continuous quality improvement projects? Is that something we're already doing? I mean, it seems like we are, so are we already meeting that?
To some extent, yes. There's a lot of data reporting that's required by the state, even for the small grant amount that we've been getting for several years. So that is in place. And then there are some quality improvement projects that are kind of initiated by DPH, and people are asked to complete surveys and things like that. So some are already involved in there, maybe a few more. But I don't anticipate, from talking to people who have gotten kind of the big grant money, as we call it, from the grant that's coming to an end, that it's an overwhelming amount or an additional load.
We should also mention, if we were to receive this grant, we would also have to do a quality improvement project, which we already are doing those things through the Student Wellness Advisory with the goals that have been put in place for that particular group. We feel as though that could coincide with this grant work, as well as conducting some, what did they refer to it as, a cultural proficiency?
A racial equity.
Assessment.
Assessment for the district.
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzano?
So when you were putting together this grant, do you have to give the state an idea of how many students might participate in a program like this? Or do you have a sense of how many students, like at the high school, learn?
No. So the grant didn't ask that question.
Okay.
It asked kind of what we have in place for a program, for this type of program, and what, how the grant could help expand or, you know, help with us with different aspects. There's a lot of questions, but that wasn't one of them.
And as far as thinking about the numbers for our program, if we were to have it, based on what we're seeing at the high school, and in our experience, and talking with others that have programs similar at the middle school level, the max that you'd like to see in a program is around 13 to 16.
Sure.
But what happens in a program like this, it's not a placement, so the student shouldn't be there all day. So some students might be there.
That was my follow-up, yes.
Yeah, so they might be there for a portion of the day.
Yep.
But maybe one might be there for the majority of the day. So it really depends on the student need.
It's also time limited. So they're only in the program for two weeks or four weeks or a couple of months, depending on their level of need as well.
Great. This is great, great idea to pursue this. Hopefully, we get it.
Yes. We won't know until March.
March, okay.
So it's going to be a long wait.
Dr. McGee?
So I support this. I'm glad you're applying for it. But just getting at the cost piece again, roughly half of your time is spent doing nursing in a fill-in capacity. You're not permanently assigned anywhere. And so
Right.
when you move away from that, other nurses would basically meet that demand.
So there would be some increase probably in the need for subs, because I do, you know, if there's, just this week, someone needed to leave during the day, and I happened to be available to cover. So I was able to do that. I believe that even with the requirements of the grant, I would still be able to fill in on an emergency basis like that. DPH isn't going to say, you know, leave a building uncovered, because, so I think there would still be some flexibility. But we wouldn't be needing to fill, you know, .5 position in a building based on that change.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, colleagues? I think this is a great opportunity, and I'm glad you're pursuing it. I think it's great anytime we can pursue outside grant funding, and in particular with an issue that's such a challenge for us. I do have a question. You mentioned the time limit on being able to serve individual students. What would be the, if you were serving a student through this program, and they had needs that maybe you were not able to fully address, or a situation that wasn't able to get under control in that time window, how would you handle that? Would that depend on the situation? What types of interventions might be available if you had a, if you, through this process, realized that you were dealing with something that was a little bit more long-term?
Well, certainly, yes, every situation is different. And those complicated situations might involve a further intervention. So that might be, you know, whether the team process through special education has to come back together and determine a placement, and determine if there's further evaluation that's beyond the scope of the program. That certainly happened at the high school. You know, we've had a situation where the program wants to support, but the needs of the student are more challenging than what the program can offer. So you have to sit down and come to an agreement as to what the next level, the next least restrictive environment might be for the child.
Okay. Thank you. We do need to proceed to a vote on this. But before that, Dr. Sawyer, did you have anything you wanted to add?
But Ms. Belcito and Ms. Freeman's plates are more than full. And so for them to take the time over the last couple of weeks to put together this grant request is greatly appreciated by me. It's always tempting when you see a grant with big dollar signs come out. I think about, boy, it'd be great to have that funding. But I think sometimes it's, that temptation, organizations are susceptible to pursuing things that may be related to some of their primary goals, but maybe tangentially. And ultimately, you get the money, and there's strings attached, and it actually takes you away from your area of focus. This is smack dab in the middle of the target for us in terms of our strategic priority around student well-being. And so I think it's very wise to pursue it. I'm optimistic that there's a good proposal, and we're hopeful that we'll get good news in March. And I fully support it, and would ask the school committee to vote to give the authorization for the chair. And you'll see in the language in the proposed vote, they do require that anytime a school committee chair changes, that the new chair also sign off on it, so this would give authorization. And, I mean, the program's not going to change. That's just a requirement of DPH, and that's why the language is the way that it is.
Thank you. So related to the assurances that the district is required to provide in connection with the application, I will entertain a motion that the school committee vote to authorize the current and future school committee chairs to sign off on the required assurances for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's Comprehensive School Health Grant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stay tuned.
The next item on our agenda is also under policy. It is with regard to school choice. We will hear an update on the topic, as well as hold our required annual public hearing tonight. The school committee is required by law to hold an annual school choice hearing and vote on whether or not we wish to accept any school choice students from other communities for the upcoming school year. Tonight's public hearing will satisfy the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, which requires a public hearing prior to a potential school committee vote to not participate in or to otherwise restrict the provisions of the inter-district school choice program. We will hear input from Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins, to be followed by a public hearing, after which we will take our vote on school choice for the coming school year. Dr. Sawyer and/or Mr. Collins?
I will just start off by saying that this is a tool that, you know, districts use in a variety of ways across the Commonwealth. It is very sensitive to the idea of what kind of space districts have, if they're growing districts, if they're shrinking districts, if there's capacity. As you know, and Mr. Collins referred to, we made a decision, the school committee approved a couple of years ago, to target a few places where we had some excess seats in certain grade levels. And that is proving to be a very important source of revenue each year. But for the reasons that you'll hear from Mr. Collins, we are not going to advise that for the 1920 school year that we allow any additional school choice seats. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins for any additional details he'd like to provide in advance of your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Just for informational purposes, you can see in the report there that when this receiving program began, and most recently, in 1617 school year, the school committee voted to open up 30 seats at various grade levels, grades two, four, five, and six, with a certain amount of seats for each of those grade levels. We actually, through a lottery process, ended up enrolling 28 students. And early in that year, one of the 28 students unenrolled fairly quickly. So we've had about 27 students for the first two years. And then in this most recent, at the end of this most recent school year, one of those 27 students actually moved from out of town into Shrewsbury. It no longer became a school choice student, but a resident student. And then another student unenrolled as well. So at this point, we have 25 students. You can see the various grade levels there. And as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, that will generate $125,000 in revenue for us this year that are used to offset teacher salaries. And those students have a right to continue on their education through grade 12 at Shrewsbury High School. But as was mentioned earlier, for space reasons, the recommendation this year is not to enroll any more incoming school choice students.
Thank you. I'm now going to open the public hearing for the benefit of folks watching at home. I will inform you that there are currently no members of the public present in our audience. So I'm actually going to hold the public hearing open. And I think while it is open, we'll take committee member comments and/or questions. Colleagues?
No comments.
No questions, because we have to do this every year?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. There are no members of the public present. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. I, at this time, will entertain a motion that the school committee... Actually, let me pause. Anybody have any comments they want to make with regard to our recommendation that we not accept school choice students for the coming year?
No.
Makes sense to me, and it's consistent with our practice. I will entertain a motion at this time that the committee vote not to participate in inter-district school choice for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is our Enrollment Projections Report. Mr. Collins will provide information regarding enrollment projections for the district's student population in future years. The report includes information on historical and projected enrollments from the New England School Development Council and the Town Manager's Office. Mr. Collins?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palich. So this is an annual report, of course. And so I'll try to just hit some of the highlights. And for the benefit of the community, they should know that you have lots and lots of data included in your school committee packet. So just first, we have traditionally used two different enrollment projection models, one that emanates from the Town Manager's Office, and that uses a traditional cohort survival ratio, looking at the past five years, and seeing how each cohort of grades succeeds from one grade level to the next. And then the second methodology is an independent, another independent method used, provided by the New England School Development Council that uses a similar, slightly different model, just a three-year lookback, and a 98% ratio for birth to kindergarten. So the results are slightly different. They're very close for one year out, and then they tend to diverge as time progresses. So you can see here, the red line is the NESDEC projection. This is just kindergarten through grade 12. So it does not include our preschool population, which typically runs about 250 to 275 students on top of these numbers. And so on the far left, you can see, again, you know, two years of history, K through 12, just over 59, just under 6,000 students. In next year, projecting just a very small increase of, you know, between 15 and 20 students, K through 12. And then as it progresses, we've got a slight increase on the NESDEC projection, and a slight decrease on the Town Manager projection. And then out in 2026 and 2027, they both trail off. But I just want to point out here that I'm going to provide some more information later on about the accuracy of the longer term of these projection methods, which would point to different results than you see here. This is just a bar chart of the same projection, same time span, but by grade level. The bottom portion being in blue, the K through four, the red being Sherwood 5 through 6, green is Oak, and the purple is the high school. And this is, again, the Town Manager projection. And you can kind of see how it progresses through time there. This is the same look, just using the NESDEC projection by the various grade levels out to 2026. This next slide shows here, this is actually the historical enrollment, just to give a little bit of history. Excuse me. This, passed over this by mistake. This is a very busy, not to be read by folks at home, but you certainly can print it out and look at it from our website. And this is, you know, the actual kind of data sheet that is used to make the projection from the Town Manager's Office. It looks back at all of the actual data, as I mentioned earlier. And then it takes that, develops a cohort survival ratio, meaning how many kids from last year's grade one persist into next year's grade two. You know, you develop these certain ratios. So for example, our biggest bump is from kindergarten to grade one, we typically see a 16% increase. And we know that that's because parents are pursuing full-day kindergarten options when they can't receive that seat here in district. You know, the cohort survival ratio from grade one to grade two is just about 6%. So we see a 6% growth on average from grade one to grade two. So that's just a couple of examples there in terms of the projection model. This piece here shows, this is more of a historical piece in a bar chart from NESDEC. And you can see back in 2008, we were a district K through 12, 5708. And if you flash forward 10 years to the present, we're at 5971. So 263 student increase, 4.6% over that time span. This one here is a projection from the present time, 10 years out. Again, it shows a drop-off. It's kind of interesting in that the number is almost identical, in that it goes back to 5707 in the year 2028, or 264 student drop-off, 4% drop-off. But again, I'm going to provide a little bit more information that might tell a different story later. Again, this is just a data sheet that NESDEC uses to formulate their enrollment projection. And more importantly, you know, if you look on the near term, this is what we're using now for next year's budget planning, and space planning, and classroom size planning. So this is our first projection for next school year, 2018, 2019, grade level by grade level, school by school. And, you know, things look very good in terms of us being well within the school committee guidelines for most of our grade levels, with a couple of exceptions, like grade two at Coolidge, or 23 on average. So that's one over there. Grade one and four at Floral are over by one, and one respectively. And the same thing with Spring Street, grade one, over just by one, 23 instead of 22 on average per class. So I just summarized here in some text what we're looking at initially here, really at the elementary school level, is no new FTE required, based upon this enrollment projection. And we've got... And we've got some flipping around of where we need to have grade level teachers at Coolidge, based upon kind of bumps, if you will, in grade levels there. But the net would be zero, zero change in elementary FTE right now. The other point to, to note would be, at Beal, we're, we're looking at right now, again, with the enrollment projection, increasing full-day kindergarten sections from four to seven. So we think that on a percentage basis, where we're right now, about 60% of our kindergarten students are in a full-day seat, that that would go up to probably about 68, 70% next year, which is good news. This section here shows average class sizes for Sherwood and Oak. At Sherwood, they'd be 25 on average, again, with no new teaching FTE, that's just one above school committee guideline. And at Oak, same story there, no new teaching FTE required. Grade eights averages would be about two over guideline. And then finally, at the high school, again, we'd reach a new all to, all-time high of students, looking at 1,874 students there. Just moving to the preschool quickly, since it's really not covered in the other enrollment projections, this chart here is, shows several years of enrollment snapshots. And the yellow bars are the October 1st enrollments, which is the traditional date in which you not only report your data to the Department of Ed for comparative purposes, but it's also a point in the year where things have kind of settled in, if you will. But at the preschool level, it never really settles in because of how students age into that program and become eligible for public school, special education services, once they reach age three. And so that happens all during the course of the school year, and we traditionally see, as you can see in the blue bar, an enrollment increase at the preschool level on average of 13%. So Mrs. Robinson has to keep seats open and available, anticipating that growth throughout the school year. It impacts things like school busing and bus routes, because we need to continue to add special needs students to those bus routes. So that's the pattern there at preschool. So, how have the enrollment projections done? This is a comparison of the Town Manager and NESDEC projection that were done in November of 2017, last year, and predicting what we would have for October 1st of 2018. And the summary on the bottom, I have a chart that kind of shows, shows it better, but on the chart, you can see that both projections were within 1%. So our actual was anywhere between 44, 44 fewer from the Town Manager projection, and 56 fewer than the NESDEC projection, but still within 99% plus accuracy. And this chart shows that the green bar is our actual enrollment for this October 1st. The blue bar is the Town Manager projection, and the red bar is the NESDEC projection. And I put arrows on the bottom to show kind of where the biggest variances were. And the first one you can see at kindergarten, the projections were anywhere between 370 and 397, and we ended up with 351. So we're, you know, speculating that, again, based upon space constraints for full-day kindergarten, parents are opting for full-day programs elsewhere. The other big bump, or larger than projected, was at grade one, which I mentioned earlier. We were, the projection showed 404 to 414, we ended up with 424, 10 more than projected. So the kids are coming back to us for, for grade one. And then, interestingly, at the high school, grades nine, 10, and 11, we ended up with fewer students than were projected by both models. And not exactly sure why there, but certainly people appreciate the relief in, in us not having realized what was projected and having fewer. Moving on to kind of a longer-term view in terms of how these projection models are working for us, the, this chart depicts, again, in green, our actual enrollment as of 10-1 this year. The blue bar shows the projection that was made in the fall of 2009, and the red bar shows the projection made in fall of 2010 by grade level. So K through four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12, and K through 12. And you can see that those projections significantly under-projected the amount of students that we actually realized in the district, to the tune of, you can see, you know, between 900 and 1,000 students under-projected. And that, that under-projection was, is not quite even, but it's, it's, it's spread across all grade levels, it's not pocketed in any one particular area. So, on a longer-term basis, these projection models have been too conservative in terms of projecting. You know, part of it is, the, the assumed birth rates were lower than what was actually materialized. And then also, during this time period, we had a fairly high number of students in charter schools, that, because they had opted for that program, their absence in our district was kind of carried forward. But we know over time that many of those students returned, or fewer went to charter schools, and so that's probably another reason why these models under-projected, along with just continued in-migration, which would be, you know, a situation where a family, a couple has raised their family, had several children, and then became empty nesters and decided to leave, whether it's an over-55 community, or an apartment, or move out of state, and then that gets backfilled with two or three school-aged childrens. So that's in-migration. So to that end, you know, we've just approved a, a new building project, and so, of course, we had to go through a very extensive process of enrollment projecting longer term, and that was spearheaded by the MSBA. Their projection for K through four, for the 2025-2026 school year, is represented in green, and that's 2,320 students. 2,320 students, K through four. And the NESDEC and MSB, excuse me, NESDEC and Town Manager models, back in that timeframe, had represented between 1,900 and 2,000 students. So, we're pleased that we went through that process with MSBA, and certainly sized the, the new Beal school. We hope to handle future enrollment growth at the K through four level. So in summary, just a couple of highlights, we are expecting slight enrollment growth between 20 and 44 students next year, you know, less than 1%, although the high school will continue to grow, and they're already at 98% room utilization, as you know, so that will continue to stress that facility and, and programs. We think at this point, given the projections K through eight, that we will not need to add any new classroom teaching staff there, and also that we're, we're hopeful and, and planning to expand our full-day kindergarten seats, again, to that probably 68, 70% level for next school year. So that's what I have for the Enrollment Projections Report, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Colleagues, questions or comments? Dr. McGee?
Why do we have NESDEC and the Town Manager? It seems that they agree so much that it's not as though we would get an action signal from one and not the other.
Well, I, I think, what, you know, having just one, or I should maybe put it this way, having two, I guess, is more of a confirmation, if you will, or a second opinion. I know that frankly, there have been questions in the past around capital projects, and people asking questions about the veracity of the Town Manager or internal projections, and so seeking this outside, third-party, independent projection is, is something that is kind of a longstanding tradition in the district. So I think that's why it's been pursued in, in the past. But that's not at all to...
You're right, they, they are very close, especially in, in the one-year mark.
I don't have the data in front of me, but I believe that in, a number of years ago, the variation was a little wider. The, the NESDEC methodology also includes housing permits that had been pulled and things of that nature, and when the, when the community was growing faster, because the Town Manager's projection didn't include some of those other pieces of data, the, the variation was a bit wider. And, you know, we do tend to take a conservative approach and look at, we usually take the, the higher of the two numbers, and we're projecting for the next year. And there's no question, and, you know, within the reports themselves, and certainly in this dark report, it talks about, you know, for, further out, it becomes less accurate, of course, because it's harder to predict some of the, the elements, but it, it is, although they're, they're very close now, sometimes that third-party validation is important when it comes to people. And of course, with the MSBA, that was an even more structured piece that, that looked at more data, hence, hence the difference. One of the things that, you know, we'll be talking to the school committee about at a future date, is bringing onboard a consultant to do some demography work when we start to look at the population, not only the number of student, future students, but where they'll be distributed around town, because we're going to have to make decisions about the attendance boundaries for all the elementary schools when the new school, Beal school comes online. So we'll actually have even more and, and probably more specific data coming in, in a future year, but it's, it's a good question.
Colleagues, anything further? Two questions from me, both related to the long-term projection of the dip in student population, and also to what you mentioned in your own report, which is if you go back about 10 years, you do tend to see the Town Manager and the NESDEC projections falling a little bit light, sort of what actually happens. It seems that there's always this long-term projection of eventually our student population is going to come down, but it's almost like a horizon, and that the closer we get to it, the farther away it, it goes, and it, we never seem to quite get there. So, sort of two related questions for us. How, the MSBA model, how does that differ from the Town Managers and the NESDEC? You know, there was mention that some more data was, was taken into consideration, but I was just wondering if you can elaborate on that?
Sure. I, I think that, you know, two ways that I would say that it differed, again, was, I think more emphasis on projects in the pipeline. So the NESDEC model looks at building permit data, so pulled permits. The MSBA projection asked us about projects in the pipeline. So not yet fully permitted, but, you know, kind of in the planning stages. And we had some multi-unit housing projects in, in that pipeline, including Lakeway Commons. The other way that it differs is, and again, I think the experience base of MSBA is helpful here in that, you know, they, they, I think, use a, what, this in-migration factor that they've seen when a community builds a new school. And so I think that was another factor that added to student headcount in their enrollment projection. So neither of the other two models have that built in. So those would be two ways that I would say that, that it would differ.
That actually addresses my second question, which was whether any of the models were taking into account changes or growth in the town's housing stock. So thank you for that. Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
No, again, this is a standard report provided each year to get a sense of where things are trending. You know, the, the most important data for us right now is looking directly at next year, and, you know, the good news is, we're not anticipating needing to add any additional teaching staff to absorb enrollment growth. We, we keep a close eye on those pieces. With, you know, the kindergarten enrollment is always a wild card, so we'll be reaching out to families in the very near future. We'll be holding the lottery for full-day slots in January, as we typically do, and depending on, you know, will, will have a better sense of kindergarten enrollment as we head into the midwinter, the, we'll start to get a sense of the first-grade enrollment as well, of how many kids are returning from kindergarten, and see if the, if the prediction is accurate. And then, of course, we, we get in-migration during the year. So if we notice, you know, the, the ones that are most sensitive, or where we have the, the smaller elementary schools, or you might only have four, or sometimes even three sections of a certain grade, if we, you know, we're basing all these projections on the October 1 numbers, the understanding some of that growth happens during the current year, as well, as well as into next year. But if we start to see a trend in a particular place, we may revise something as we go forward, so we don't end up in an unanticipated situation with class sizes that are undesirably high. But right now, it looks as if we're status quo, and that's certainly helpful as we start to look at budgetary resources needed for next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have before us the minutes from our regular meeting of November 14th. The minutes have been approved by our secretary, Mrs. Fritz. Are there any questions, comments, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, without objection, the minutes of November 14th are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this evening. I would entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, to return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this motion requiring a roll call vote. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Thank you.[1737.92]